Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we begin our first board meeting of the new academic year, and we're going to start off with a very important presentation on academic recovery. But before we do that, I'm going to ask for a couple moments of silence in honor of the 13 lives that we lost in our military in Afghanistan. And secondly, in honor of the upcoming 20th anniversary of the September 11th attacks. It's hard to believe that a whole generation now has been born without any personal knowledge of that day. But perhaps they're the fortunate ones. The memories of that day are seared in our collective memories, and the thoughts of that attack still cause us so much pain. And whenever you see an image from that day, it doesn't help but cause a chill down your spine and a tear down your face. But whether you lived through that day or not, we will never forget. One cannot forget the human beings are capable of causing a lot of pain to one another, or the thousands of lives that ended far too early, or the bravery of so many of our first responders. And most importantly, one cannot forget that that event produced a wave of patriotism and empathy, and a shared realization that in the United States of America, our love for our country unites us more than any differences may divide us. So with that, I ask for a few moments of silence in honor of the 13 military members that we lost in Afghanistan, and the thousands that we lost on September 11th, and in the aftermath of September 11th from September 11th-related causes. All right. We'll begin this new school year with an academic recovery plan. As we've talked about a lot, the past 18 months of the pandemic has taken a toll on everyone, including our students, and we realize that there is a gap that needs to be remediated. And Dr. Delia and his cabinet have spent the summer putting together what I think is a first-rate plan. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Delia to introduce, and then he'll turn it over to his cabinet.
Good evening, everyone. Something that's super, super important to us is, you know, learning of our students over the past 15 months, 18 months, they have had interrupted services within their education, especially at the onset of COVID. I believe our district did an unbelievable job over those 18 months, the best we could. I think our teachers were fabulous, all staff members, going from custodians all the way through in our district to make South Huntington a special place. We continue to do that. And that looking into this school year, you know, once I was, you know, appointed as superintendent, this was one of my first pieces that I knew we had to tackle as a team here. Because like I said, we did an unbelievable job with the resources we had here in South Huntington. But now it's time to having our students here back basically full-time in almost a pretty close-to-traditional kind of school year. We know what the task we have here at hand. And we put together committees last spring. This didn't start in the middle of the summer. This was done very early on. I know Dr. Murphy and Dr. Steele will be speaking in depth about the act of the plan and the contributions made from everyone. We know there was learning loss. There's no, and it wasn't just South Huntington. It's been all over the place. And our job here, and we're in a very, very unique situation here in South Huntington, where we received some funding from the American Rescue Plan that is going to enable us to put together, and I absolutely agree with Mr. Seapeta, that we have an excellent plan that will be shared with you tonight. And as you can see, we have our two goals. I'm not sure if you can, can you see it okay? You know, obviously. It looks much better. We're good, we're good, thank you, Mr. Bronson. Obviously, the academic needs are essential. The social-emotional needs, just as essential. And when we talk about also providing equity for all of our students, making sure they get what they need to succeed. We care about every single student in this district tremendously. And we want every single student in this district to succeed. And we have a plan that was led by Dr. Murphy and Dr. Steele, that I'm going to present to you now, that I believe will address those needs. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Murphy.
Thank you, Dr. Delia. So one of the things that we needed to do is we need to identify areas of concern. This started in the spring of last year. We met with a number of people, which we're going to explain at both the elementary and secondary level. And we needed to make sure that we were addressing the needs as we moved from a hybrid, and as we remember last year, and as a parent of a Whitman, Whitman student, hybrid was, was something that was necessary, but really disrupted the learning process, didn't allow them to really acclimate to a normal school setting. And we wanted to move into a traditional school setting, and what that would look like, and how we would be able to support to make sure that would be something, there would be a positive transition back to a traditional school setting. So we wanted to create a comprehensive plan that not only addressed the academic needs of students, and what, and what those academic needs look like, but also the social-emotional needs of students. And we decided, we broke up in this presentation, we broke it up into two components, one being the elementary side, which I'm going to invite Dr. Steele up now to talk about, and then the secondary side, and how that all gels in together as a district-wide plan. Dr. Steele?
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. All right, and good evening, everyone. I am happy to have the opportunity to share our K-5 academic recovery plan. Before we start, I would like to acknowledge the members of our team. Each building was represented by building administration, teachers from all grade levels, members of our mental health staff, in addition to our curriculum coach and members of our technology department. So I want to thank them for all their efforts and their thoughtfulness into putting this plan together. When we began as a team, we decided on the importance of assessment in gathering data for our kids when they come in in September. Now, we typically do spend a good portion of September collecting data, but we knew that coming in off of the pandemic, that kids were going to come in at varying levels. And as Dr. Delia and Dr. Murphy mentioned previously, we know that there has been some learning loss, and we address it as unfinished learning. So in addition to our typical ways of collecting data through IREDDI, math assessments, and classroom assessments, this year, all teachers have the ability to benchmark their kids. And what that will give them is an accurate reading level as far as where the kids are coming in. Now, this is something that was typical, really, to K-2. We began doing this work in grades three and five, pre-pandemic. We were in the middle of professional development when the pandemic hit, and we were not able to continue at the time. But at the end of the year last year, with the help of our literacy coach and with our reading staff, teachers were able to be trained and get refreshers on how to implement these benchmarking systems. So we're happy that that's in place.
When do you think that collection will be complete?
By the end of September, and, well, maybe the beginning of October, depending on when the diagnostic is finished.
Okay.
We have additional supports, or we're revisiting or re-implementing our support systems in addition to additional supports. We're happy that our AIS staff is back in their traditional roles. We were very fortunate to have most of our reading teachers serve as classroom teachers, virtual teachers, or partner teachers throughout the past 18 months. But now they are back into their traditional roles, and will be able to service our Tier 3 students with individualized instruction. We have also added on to the reading department a reading teacher in the primary grades and a reading teacher in intermediate grades that are going to provide that intensive AIS instruction to our self-contained students. And this is not something that we had in the past, so we're happy to have this as an addition to address any unfinished, any unfinished learning they may have had as well. We have also added on to our permanent substitute staff. Each grade level will have three permanent substitute teachers that will assist with the academic recovery in the classrooms. So they will be able to support the classroom teacher in addition to supporting the students through small group instruction. We have our teaching assistants going back into the classroom. Last, for the past 18 months, we've used our teaching assistants by, but they were able to conduct small group, small group instruction in various classrooms, so they received extensive training on that. So now they're bringing that expertise back into their classrooms as an additional support for the teachers and for the students. And we also are aware of class size. We keep a close eye on this to keep our class sizes at a reasonable size so that we can really hone in on that small group instruction. Some additional supports we have new to us this year. We have math coaches, one per building. And these math coaches are available to support the teachers in the classroom as we continue the rollout of our IREDDI mathematics program, in addition to support the three math teaching assistants in each building that will be servicing our students with AIS math instruction. We have our K-5 literacy coach that has been with us for quite some time, and she has really, you know, conducted an inventory on all of our resources and assured that the teachers have all of the resources they need to continue with this academic plan. In addition to our regular grade-level coaches, we have added on grade-level coaches that are specific to the content area to support the teachers and to support our goals. And we have really added on support in our technology department. We have a supervisor of technology, Mrs. Rihanna Fulton, and her assistant, Marley Rice. And I will attest to the fact that they have been working hours every day on, you know, strengthening our technology program, ensuring that all of our technology needs are met and that the programs that we're using are really supporting our curriculum goals. We also have three tech coaches now. One tech coach in Maplewood, one tech coach in Birchwood, and one shared between Oakwood and Countrywood. And Oakwood and Countrywood also has tech mentors in addition to their tech coaches. And these coaches are also available to support the classroom teachers and making sure that our, or supporting them with ensuring that our technology is implemented in our curriculum daily. And we also have an IT person available in each building that is available to address any technical needs the staff members may have. At the end of last year, as building administrators, we presented our IREDDI results to the, to the curriculum council, and we were able to point out some areas in needs of improvement. And we looked at this as a recovery team to give us a starting point. We know that we are collecting data all this month of September, but it did give us a springboard on things that we need to look out for, not only to influence our instruction, but also to influence the professional development that we're putting in place moving forward. So this is an outline of areas of need that we see K-2. And then we have an outline looking at areas of need in 3-5. And what we do is we, of course, we look for commonalities across the years and throughout the grades. And this continues to drive our professional development and instructional plans that we are putting in place. So how, what will all this look like? So the structure of using the permanent subs on the grade levels in each building, the building principals will develop a rotating schedule on how to best utilize these permanent subs in the classroom. Because we want to ensure that we're utilizing them in a way that is meeting the needs of what the kids actually need in order to progress. In our ICT classes, we continue to have our two full-time teachers, a general education teacher, a special education teacher, in addition to the teaching assistant that are now back into all the classrooms. And that teaching assistant is all, will also be available to run small group instruction. Our self-contained classes will continue to have their teaching assistants in addition to that additional reading support throughout the year. Now, at any time when the need arises, these perm subs can be used across all the classrooms. So they're not just necessarily for the gen ed classrooms, although they will be offering a lot of support with benchmarking systems because the gen ed classrooms typically have one teacher. After all the data is collected and programs are up and running, these perm subs can be used throughout the grade level. In addition to academic recovery, we are well aware of the fact that we need to address any social-emotional needs of our children. The past 18 months have been hard on everyone. And if we feel that as an adult, imagine how our kids feel. So our members of our mental health team that were on the academic recovery team formed a subcommittee, and they were able to identify a curriculum resource that they felt would best fit the needs of our kids when they returned in September. And they identified a program, or a resource rather, called Strong Kids. And what Strong Kids provides is a group of lessons that are, you know, age-appropriate, K-2 group, a 3-5 group. And the teachers are equipped with these lessons to provide instruction in their classroom at least once a month. And what these lessons provide for kids is that it teaches them what their emotions are. It teaches them the language to use in identifying their emotions. It teaches them that it's okay to feel a certain way about things. And in addition, how to navigate through things, how to go from sad to happy. And that it's okay to feel a certain way at certain times. In addition, it talks about mindfulness, how to reflect on situations. It teaches tools as breathing through situations. So the teachers are equipped with this to start these conversations in the classroom with our youngest kids. And of course, our mental health staff is available to assist in any way. Because once you teach the kids the language and teach them how to identify, they will tell you things, and then what? We need to know how to best, best approach that and best help them. Part of this resource is a pre-test and a post-test that's available, so we can pretty much gauge how kids are growing through this, this resource.
Is that a diagnostic test, or?
It's more like a survey. It's more of a survey.
Okay.
And for the younger kids, it's more of a reflection, I would say, at the end of the year, on what they learned about the language, what they learned about their feelings, and how they can identify certain emotions. So moving forward, we will continue with a consistent review of data in order to make sure that our instruction is matching the needs of our kids. We will continue with professional development in all of our content areas, and have a continuous review of our digital programs to make sure that we are maintaining all the great things that we put in place, that we are moving forward, and that our technology is supporting our curriculum goals. And I would like to turn it back over to Dr. Murphy, who's going to talk about our 6-12 recovery plan.
Thank you, Dr. Steele. So as you can see, the elementary plan was extensive, and it very much mirrored the secondary plan. You're going to see, you're going to hear commonalities between the two. At the secondary level, we had, just as the elementary level, we had a lot of personnel, administrative, student services, teachers, building leaders, we all working together to figure out what we would do and how we would address the issues that we knew we were going to face once coming out of, once, once we were going back to a traditional school setting. At the secondary level, we broke it into three facets of recovery. You have your attendance, your academics, and then your social-emotional learning. Within attendance, some of the goals that we looked at was that making those connections with parents to a greater extent. We felt that there, when there was a disconnected home, when there wasn't an ability for the parent and the school, whether it be the teacher or the administrator to talk to that parent, there were attendance issues would rise. So there was a need, there was a goal, a need to address and improve that, that current communication. But not only just with that particular parent, but holistically. And that was going to happen through what we decided to do in starting in the summer is meeting with churches, community groups, community leaders, being able to make connections, not only with those parents, but the people that parents listen to out within the outside community. And that was an important structure within the secondary plan, so that we're not only just hitting that one particular parent, it becomes a communal, a communal feeling of attendance is something that's serious at the secondary level, and that students must go to school. The other reason, the other thing was taking, identifying students that had attendance issues and starting summer conferences. I know at the secondary level, if you came from Stimson or if you came from Silas, the next school building would get a list of students that knew, that were on the radar for attendance issues or just issues in general. We knew, we wanted to make sure that they started the year right. And that started with parent meetings and conferences to really have, start off with a positive frame of mind for the school building and make sure that we're addressing the needs of the students, not only academically, but also socially emotionally. So how to improve this attendance? We need a focus, a greater focus on chronic attendance through the use of real data, not through subjective thought saying, well, this person, this person doesn't attend school. Well, how much? So we need to use e-school data and parent portal a lot more, with a lot more extent, to make sure that we're addressing the students that we really need to address, that nobody falls behind the track, or find, under the, behind, excuse me, between the tracks. Let's try that again. These teams will weekly, we'll ensure. So at the secondary level, teams would meet weekly using data from Infinite Campus to identify students with attendance problems. This would be, these meetings would have a social worker, an administrator, sometimes an attendance officer, a guidance counselor, as well as teachers. They would identify the students and what, and how, and how we would address it with each individual student. We would individualize how we're going to address it with that particular student and that particular family. We would utilize permanent substitutes to make phone calls, to create a mentorship program, so that there's a personal connection with a student that's having attendance issues, rather than them just being a wallflower that they have somebody to confide into, to go to, or somebody just to go check on them, to make sure that they're attending classes and making sure that there's no issues within the school building. So our goal was that after we used this resource, or these, or these, these resources within Infinite Campus, that this attendance committee would be able to be successful, that we would be able to make real change with students and make sure that attendance issues are addressed before they become problematic, where then we have retention or summer school. The other thing was to have ongoing parent meetings, not just to say, we'll, we'll address it when there is a problem, but the goal is to make sure that we're addressing it all the time so that it's not just the bad phone calls, it's the good phone calls too. It's saying, you're doing well, we're improving, we're having better, making them a part of the educational process, meaning the parent. So how do we make parents get more involved? Parent tutorials, it's important through academics. So attendance is closely related to academics. If you're not in school, you're not going to do well. And if a parent's not informed, they're not going to know how to make sure their child does well. So one of the goals for academics was to make sure that there are tutorials in person and for the working parent that are virtual, that will be able to address things, like utilizing Infinite Campus parent portal, knowing parent square now, making sure that you're able to read or know what Google Classroom looks like. Because without these things, if you're a parent that's not knowledgeable in 21st century digital technology, and have, and have no resource in order for that, you're never going to be successful, and you'll never be able to sit down with your child and make sure that they're successful throughout the school day. The other thing we wanted to do is hold 6th through 12th grade parent orientations. Normally, we'll say at a high school level, you would only have a freshman orientation because you're entering a new school building. This year, you saw that with Mr. Costa and his team, they did not only freshmen, but they also did sophomore. It's important that they re-envelop themselves in the school community and that they know the importance of, of a traditional structure to make sure that they're successful in school. The other thing we talked about was ongoing articulation meetings with guidance, data team, using data to make sure that when we're making decisions about student scheduling, about what's going on, if they need academic services, that we're, we're using real data to make sure that we're informing those decisions. And that was something that was important to the team when we talked about it in the spring. The other thing was, at the high school level, was the creation of four core lab classes. These are not just lab classes for your remediation students. These labs, which are located in central parts of the building, that they address not only the student that's in, that's identified as needing academic intervention services, but also the AP student to give them support. So that they can go in, and whether it's a test, a unit, or just, or just in general to get, answer questions on a homework, they have an outlet for them to be able to have, to meet with a teacher, to be able to get the, to get the help that they need to be successful. The other thing we want in the permanent substitutes is when we're not, when they're not being used for attendance and we don't need them for, to cover a class, is being in. If they're a social studies or a science or a maths permanent substitute, they're in as another hands-on person within those labs. Also pulling kids out of lunchrooms that we know are identified as having academic, that need academic intervention services, that we're able to make those connections. Because the more connections we make with students, whether it's going into a lunchroom and picking them up, or having somebody identify or talk with them as a mentor in one of the lab classes, the more successful they're going to be because the more they identify with the school building.
What challenges are posed if the parents, if English is not their first language, and how do you address that?
Great question. E&amp;L is also encompassed within these four lab core classes we have, because we have content E&amp;L teachers, that they would also be able to be helping within those labs. We are, as well as having subs that are, that are bilingual that will help within these labs, these lab classes.
And what about in the connection with the parents as well?
Connect, well, we're very lucky against the high school level that you have, you have administrators that are bilingual, that do reach out to the community, that reach out to the community for, to give these services. Plus, what we'd be doing electronically, so if we're creating these flip messages, they're both in English and in Spanish, so that no matter what, whether you're, you're a monolingual parrot, you're still going to know how to use parent square because it's going to be in your, 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 your language of origin. After academics, one of the biggest things that we found, and I don't, and, Dr. Steele and I have talked about this numerous times, is that we don't care if you were in kindergarten or you were a senior, there were significant interruptions to social-emotional learning, whether you're preparing for college or getting ready for a new school building or moving on to first grade. The level of social, you know, the level of anxiety that students experienced during these 18 months, the, the ability to be able to interact successfully with their peers was all interrupted during these 18 months. And it's important, no matter where you are, that these things are addressed. And the committee felt that this was important as well. So what we do, and what we've normally done, but I think we need to do it with a little more consistency, is that when, as we identified students with academic needs from building to building, it was important that we had conversations for those social-emotional needs of students. So if you moved from Silas to Stimson, or Stimson to Whitman, those conversations were occurring, getting a list of students that we knew that were going to struggle no matter what when moving to a traditional setting, and starting having proactive conversations and committing to making sure that they feel a part of the school building. That was an important thing. And those things started occurring in the summer with your APs and your, and your deans at the secondary level, having those conversations and really identifying. That information was trans, or was relayed to their teachers, so they're making those connections early on, so that they're able to be successful at the beginning of the school year. The other thing that we looked at was referrals from teachers. You will, you will have students that maybe are socially outward, or social, you know, that are, that are really just a ball of energy in the classroom, but they're hurting inside because they're just not, not making that connection, or they're not successful, and they don't know how to be successful. So having that teacher input and having teachers be a part of the process and identifying those students was very important to make sure that it was success, that we would be successful in identifying the right type of student to make sure we're giving them those supports through student services and through, and, and giving them to address their social-emotional needs. Students that were fully virtual over the last 18 months was a no-brainer. They needed to be seen, and it should be on a regular basis, because it was important, because they've had such a disconnect from their, from their peers, from a traditional learning structure, that they needed to have some regularity within terms of meeting with a social, you know, social worker, meeting in student services. It does not have to be formal, it's not, it's not something that has to, they have to be identified for that, but making sure that's a connection to see how they're building, how they're growing within their school building and how they're acclimating to being back to a traditional structure. So our goal for social, is to make, and it kind of says the same thing we did with attendance, is making better connections with parents. Parents are going to know their child better at the secondary level. They're going to know if their child's sleeping late, sleeping too much, not, not really being an active social member within their own household. Having the connection where mom, dad, despite learning or language barriers, coming and communicating with someone from the building is important because they're going to know better if we need to address things at the school building. So making sure that there's those connections. Refocusing mindfulness. Couple of years ago, we started mindfulness at the high school, and it really was successful. I think it's more important now to make sure kids understand how to center themselves, how to be able to deal with the stresses of life, and how to, and how to equip themselves when things don't, when things become, when, when your, your anxiety levels become high. And I think it's important, just like what Dr. Steele said, that mindfulness is an activity we look or focus with at the high school. Having push-in opportunities with our student services staff, having the, you know, kids, especially at the secondary level, they don't want to share their feelings, they're not as apt to talking to a teacher, or they're not as apt, at least, walking down to finding, finding someone to talk to. Whereas if a student services personnel is walking in to do small groups, checking in on people, saying, hey, do you know about this place? Is anybody feeling, doing many lessons, being able to go in that classroom? They may make that connection where that student goes, you know what, I really identified, or, or I really bonded with that person? I'm going to go check them out in student services. It's just another layer to hopefully getting to have a student talk to somebody when they need to. And last but certainly not least, is really focusing PTA cultural arts money to address social-emotional learning at, at the secondary level, making sure there's programs and services available. There are plenty through BOSIs and, and, and other programs that we can really identify where it's helping students with, you know, with these anxieties or these feelings that they're experiencing coming back to a traditional setting. Some concepts for unfinished learning that we got. We always want to look at the silver lining, and it wasn't, you know, it certainly wasn't kids not, you know, not getting dressed for school and sitting in their pajamas in class. But what was good about it was, we were able to create a credit recovery class at the high school where students, rather than going to summer school, or being, because they had too many credits they failed, being retained, they were able to go and get credit recovery at the end of the school day. This, we did it for over 100 students, and it had an 80% success rate, which means eight out of 10 kids that walked in there didn't either have to go to summer school, or maybe they did because they had so many credits, but they definitely didn't get retained. And that's an important thing, because once you're retained, the success rate of you graduating high school on time is significantly lower. So it was important that we had a program. That was the silver lining in this program. The other thing we saw at Stimson and Silas was they had Saturday academies, because when you have working families and you have kids moving all, you know, you're watching kids and there's supervision, having the ability to drop, you know, to have those connections in Saturday and being able for them to get some remediation was a positive for both Stimson and Silas, and it's something that I think should and would and will continue, just like credit recovery at the high school, because these are things that definitely help students. The other thing we saw was the learning labs and AI structure. We were able to get four core learning labs at the high school, which means that you have full-time employees that are able to really address the needs of students, plus the slew of substitutes that are going to help with that as well at all core subject areas and at all levels. And 21st century, as I, as, as we looked, and every principal knows this, and every teacher knows this, being able to communicate through a visual teacher knows this, being able to communicate through a visual plat, for a virtual platform is much easier for parents, being able, or even so much as far as our announcements at the secondary level are now video formatted, where now there's greater connections where they're seeing their peers and going through some of the school, you know, the, the school news of the day on a daily basis. So, these are the positives that we found from, from our academic recovery from last year's experiences. Other virtual opportunities was virtual conferences. We're able to provide teachers and/or even some of our students that are in programs to have virtual, to have conferences virtually. It has been a benefit. The other thing is we see district-wide meetings when we're having full faculty meetings or inter, you know, interbuilding faculty meetings, departmental meetings. We're able to now communicate and, you know, over across a great, or a great area and, and still be in one, in one, you know, in a virtual location. Snow days and emergency days were good, which now we have the option, doesn't mean we go through, that we're able to then utilize this type of service for, you know, virtual learning. And just as we had, we had a hybrid curriculum night at Maplewood, which was very successful, where you had stu, you had parents there in, present, as well as outside, you know, virtually where they're able to be part of, of, part of their child's education when they could have probably not if they were at work or if they were not, or they were indisposed with daycare.
At the elementary level, you've got the iReady to identify, you know, the benchmarks of how far people are behind. What about at the high school, how do we determine that?
High school is, so a lot of it's going to be local assessments. We do not have like a diagnostic like iReady at the high school. And working with Mr. Costa, this is obviously a conversation we just started having today, is something we're looking at where you're using midterm examinations or, you know, midterm diagnostics, where you're using a locally created assessment, as well as your own assessments. But it's the training to give teachers at the high school, which is something that we're going to be taking with, with department chairs, extended supervisors, where all tests are diagnostic, every test is diagnostic, it's how you're utilizing that information and where we're doing and how we're assessing them and how they're progressing. So, it's more of just, rather than a test just ends when you take it and that's it, it's where do you use that, how do you use that test, how do you use the information on the test, and how do you progress the student to be able to be successful beyond that test?
So, we just wanted to wrap up by saying that we took this, we took also this as an opportunity to be reflective of our practices, not only in reflecting on why we do what we do, but how we actually go about doing it. So, the two terms of equality and equity are both important to us. We want our students to have equal access to resources. We want them to have equal opportunities to meet with success. But the difference is in how we distribute those resources. How well do we know our kids and how are we equipping ourselves to give them exactly what they need to meet with their own personal success? And that is really the focus of, of a lot of our work. So, thank you for your time. Dr. Murphy, did you want to add anything else?
No, uh, thank you. If anybody have, and from the board or if anybody have any questions?
Board have any questions? Uh, Ms. Meyer?
Um, Dr. Steele listens for you and thank you so much for this incredible presentation and all the work that went into it. My question, Dr. Steele, is on the consistent review of data at the elementary level. I know the iReady assessments are typically only given three times a year. What are we thinking in terms of frequency and consistency so that we can have really measurable progress and make sure that the methods that we're implementing are effective for the students that need the most?
Well, the benchmarking data is given about every four to six weeks. Then we have consistent classroom data through observations, through regular classwork, and our math assessments come throughout and at the end of every unit. So, it's not just the iReady data that we're looking at, but we're looking at data throughout. And I know each building has data teams that they work with, so they definitely work in the interim, and then John and I have meetings set up with the principals at certain times throughout the year so that you can collectively look at that data as well.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
And just, just to piggyback on this, every principal, so every principal at McRae Columbus was given goals that they had to do, and they also had the two district goals that Dr. Lee and then we presented today, they're a part of their goal. So, that these goals now, so they had to give us their own, how their action steps and how they're going to support those goals, and obviously those two goals go in line with this. So, we mean, we're going to be meeting them repeatedly throughout the year, so that either adjusts what they're doing right now, so that it's not just like, at the end of the year, did you make it or not? It's how are you making it, where's the benchmarks, how are you progressing so that we can keep, not keep tabs, but make sure that we're giving the support necessary for them to be, that the principals give the support necessary to be successful.
Other questions? Just one final question for me. This is a great presentation, a lot of information, and I'll use a very generic term. Let's say that like, you know, a student was 20% behind, you know, because of the pandemic. What would be the goal for that particular student? Do you think by the end of the year, you can get them up to speed or?
Depending on the level and you're, and you're, and it's, and is it elementary, is it, is it, is it secondary? It would be, it really is where they test within their, within that pre-test. Are they, are they more, you know, are they, what tier are they on? Are they progressing, are they merging? So, the goal is, can you make it, is that 20% going from they're below proficiency to proficiency but not mastery? It, it really depends on where their learning levels are at that point. But I know in a lot of the goals for the principals, the look, you know, we looked at it as at least it was anywhere between, their goal was a 10, between a 10 and 20% of moving kids up the dial to make sure that they're, that, that's, that they make, they need success.
All right. There you go. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we're going to move into our business agenda for the evening. Thank you once again to everybody who worked so hard on that presentation. All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Mr. Bronson, seconded by Mr. Nickwitz. Any questions on the agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? Items C through F are listed. Those are the minutes, bills, and that's it. Is there a motion? Mr. Bronson, seconded by Mr. Nickwitz. Any questions on items C through F? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving on to new business, we have eight new business items for tonight. The first new business item is a donation from the forum on, of Indian women on Long Island. Is there a motion? Mr. Nickwitz, seconded by Ms. Carey. And this is a, a very generous donation of 68 backpacks from Nikki Batia of the Forum of Indian Women on Long Island, and their contents are valued at $2,000. So, this is a terrific donation. I believe Ms. Batia is with us tonight? Is she? Yes, would you like to, would you like to address the board on this donation?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me, and, um, I do this every year. I started a forum, it's a Facebook group that I started about six years ago, and every year I do two charity events. One is school fundraiser, a school supply fundraiser, and then in December I do a third one. And my members send me the money, open-heart at me without any reflection, and I do all the labor. I do have extra funds left over from getting the backpacks, so if any of your kids or children require shoes or jackets, please feel to, feel free to drop to me and I'll be happy to try to get it to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board have any questions? All in favor? Thank you so much, Ms. Batia. All right, moving on to new business item number two is the approval of a grant from Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation. Motion. Mr. Nickwitz, seconded by Ms. Carey. And this is a $5,000 grant that we were able to secure, and it's going to go through the district's K through 12 sports program, and many people had a hand in this. I'd like to thank Angela Gunsel, Joanna Chiribaga, and our own Vice President Laura Carey for bringing this to our attention and helping us secure this grant, so, uh, thank you. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Carey. Moving on to new business item number three is approval of the internal report from Noraki Smith. Is there a motion? Ms. Meyer, seconded by Ms. Carey and Mr. Nickwitz. Dr. Senmore?
Yeah, so the, um, Noraki Smith, our internal orders, they perform the review of our benefits department, and they presented at our most recent audit committee with chaired by Ms. Nickwitz and also trustee Mr. Bronson, and the report came back very positive with some, you know, some minor recommendations for enhancement, which we are always open and receptive to. And so, I'm, I'm very proud of the benefits department and their continued oversight of, of those areas and dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Excellent. Ms. Nickwitz, satisfactory to the?
Very much so. Our last meeting was a celebration that we're doing things well. I think, um, we, yeah, it was terrific. We had, we had a nice report, I was very pleased.
Thank you. Always, uh, our audit committee did a great job, so thank you, Mr. Nickwitz. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Moving on to new business item number four is the approval of the foster grandparent program. Is there a motion? Mr. Nickwitz, seconded by Mr. Joyner. And so, this is a resolution between the Board of Education and the Federation of Organizations, and they provide foster grandparents for our students of Countrywood, Oakwood, Birchwood, and Maplewood. We've been doing this annually and it's a, it's a beautiful program. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, new business item number five is a request to remain in South Huntington. Motion. Ms. Meyer, seconded by Mr. Bronson. And this is regarding two students to remain in South Huntington. The matter was discussed in executive session, and so the, we would be voting, if we vote yes, that's to approve the request to remain in South Huntington, and no would be to deny the request to remain in South Huntington. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Resolution fails. All right, moving on to new business item number six is contract approval with advanced cardiovascular diagnostics. Motion. Ms. Carey, seconded by Ms. LaCarre. Dr. Delia, you want to tell us a little bit of this?
Absolutely. We were able to secure a company to provide onsite at Walt Whitman High School on Mondays, COVID testing, both rapid PCR, antibody testing, and also the vaccine, the Pfizer vaccine will be available as well. We'd like to start this program on Monday, September 13th. We are still awaiting guidance from our local health departments on to when it, because as we know, it has been mandated by New York State to have testing for all of our employees. We don't have an exact start date at this moment, but we expect that to be coming to us very shortly. But in the meantime, we have this company set up to come in from 8:00 to 4:00 on every Monday and at no cost to the district. What's required of each employee that comes, or any, it's open to students as well, is that they would have to provide insurance for this. And if someone does not have insurance, some of our employees do not have health insurance as our permanent subs, our sub custodians, they would be covered under the CARES II Act. So, this is basically a service that would not require any out-of-pocket for any of our employees or students for that matter.
And this is in part response to the mandate that's come down from the Department of Health of the state of New York over the last week or so, which requires all employees of a school, school district to either be vaccinated or to submit to weekly testing. So, uh, this would make the, I guess, the weekly testing a little easier to accomplish.
Yeah, we're trying to offer it as a courtesy to our community here and have it onsite. Instead of having to travel somewhere, every Monday will be available. I know we have some Mondays where we have holidays, but I know Dr. Senemore has been working with the company to provide an alternate schedule, mostly on Tuesdays.
Board have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you to everybody who worked on that, in particular, Dr. Senemore. Okay, moving on to new business item number seven is a secret determination for temporary tent structures of Woven High School and Oakwood. Motion. Ms. Carey, seconded by Ms. LaCarre and Mr. Joyner. Dr. Senemore?
Yes, so, uh, every one of our schools has a tent or a tents, you know, a high school has multiple tents. We're certainly going to try to get some additional tents as the weeks move forward. Depending on the size of the tent, for example, a 30 by 30 would require the state approval and, and the subsequent secret, which regards to an environmental impact, and obviously there's no environmental impact.
Right. It's a tent.
It's a tent.
Kind of obvious, so.
Boy, I can't get the last two seconds of my life back. I know. Discussing a tent.
A tent. A resolution for a tent. And we had one last year for the, uh, the tent, so. Yeah, at high school. Okay, uh, any questions? I assume not. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, new business item number eight is recommendations for placement of the students by the Committee on Special Education, dates listed April, May, June, August, and the Committee on Preschool Special Education, dates listed May, June, and August. Is there a motion? Mr. Bronson, seconded by Ms. Meyer. And this is in order based on the, our board's discussion in the executive session. Resolutions are ready to vote on. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Moving on to personnel schedules, personnel schedules 2, 9, 13, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 22. Is there a motion? Mr. Bronson, seconded by Ms. Carey and Mr. Nickwitz. All in favor? Any opposed? Information and reports are listed. Audit committee, any, anything further, Mr. Nickwitz?
No, uh, nothing other than, I think we posted this past two weeks ago. Anybody else who is interested?
I think we're, I think we're just reviewing the, the posting, but that's, that's the plan. Yep.
Okay, so the plan is to, thank you, my policy expert, but we're, 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 we have a vague on the audit committee that we want to make sure we fill in accordance with the rules and regulations of, you know, of state and, and our own district, so we're reviewing that, and we will be asking if anybody wants to be, I believe what we're going to do is we're going to ask if anybody wants to be considered. We have some people who've been already indicated that they're interested and, uh, so by all means, we want to make sure we do it the right way.
Okay, all right. Mr. Nickwitz? Future meetings are listed. Our next meeting will be back here on September 22nd, followed by meetings on October 6th, October 27th, November 17th, and December 8th. Comments by board members. All right, Mr. Bronson?
As I was going to say, the, the policy committee has been meeting, for our next board meeting, we hope to have the student board member policy open for, for discussion and for, for a vote. Thanks to Dr. Murphy and to Principal Costa for their input, as well as Mr. Nickwitz. So, again, we, right now, we have a draft policy, it's gone to our constituents, we want to get their input as well, but again, the plan is to have it for the September 22nd meeting.
Excellent. And that's in accordance with the vote in the public that we had in May to approve a student board member.
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bronson. Ms. Meyer?
Thank you. I just want to commend Dr. Delia, Dr. Steele, Dr. Murphy, and the entire Academic Recovery Plan team on including such a robust section on social and emotional learning. Many of you may be aware that tomorrow, September 10th, is World Suicide Prevention Day. In our community, like every other community, is not immune to this tragedy, and I think it's important that we are focusing on the holistic needs of our students, and I very much appreciate how seriously you've taken it and for including it here. So, thank you and I commend you on your efforts there.
Thank you. Other comments? I have a couple of my own. I'd like to, first of all, in the Newsday on September 3rd, the Long Island People on the Move column, South Huntington dominated. We had Dr. Murphy, Dr. Steele, Marley Rice, Dr. Richards, Jose Castillo, and Charlotte Hirschbeckman, all featured in Newsday with their new positions. So, congratulations to all of you and, uh, very nice pictures. Congratulations. I was looking at them like, oh, that's from, that's South Huntington?